All right, folks, we've got seven o'clock. We're going to go there and get started. Pam Buckley was just giving me the sad information. Our good friend and longtime library board member, I think he was chairman of the board for a number of years, Jerry Steed died this afternoon. We want to keep Jerry's family in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers. Joanne Ross, Mike Ross's wife, died earlier this week. Funeral was tomorrow morning. And Don Nusker continues to battle the stuff with his foot. He had another surgical procedure. I think that's the third one on the same foot. And we need to keep Don in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers as well. Let's start out with our moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Shana Jones is here this evening to take the hand of counsel. Do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? We'll see if that Canaan County schools, no, Canaan County, yeah, Canaan County schools, that's all right.
Originite?
Yeah, yeah. We'll see if they taught you right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us on this chilly, God, it's still hard for me to say December. 2019 is almost done. The only person signed up to address counsel this evening is Matt Kerner from Opportunity House. Matt, you've got the floor.
I just want to stop by two things real quick to step up. We're about halfway through the Rural Communities of the Responsible Land Grant that Cali helped us put together. We've just turned in our needs assessment. Next, we'll be doing some strategic planning. And we're looking at the possibilities of doing some studies regarding medically assisted treatments and the efficacy surrounding that. We're also looking at expanding capacity in this area and using the implementation part of the grant for Opportunity House to become a licensed behavioral health center instead of just a recovery program. So then we'd be moving into hiring therapists and such, be more medically oriented. That almost just gives us the ability to medicate them. The other issue I wanted to talk about was I saw some stuff on social media a week or seven ago. We've been contemplating this for a while, but that was kind of the impetus for action and that we will be at two of our facilities. Madison Street, which is not far from Jawbone Park, and our recovery center on Cleveland Avenue near Northside Park. We will be installing two used syringe drop boxes. They're essentially like the old school mailboxes that were bolted to the sidewalks. Nobody can get anything backed out. Not that anybody would want to do that. There's a lot of research. I meant to bring some copies of the National Association Health Study that showed that drop boxes will reduce found syringes of 95, 98% was what they found within a few hundred meters where the box is. So that puts us in range of both those parks. So we figured if we did it, you guys wouldn't have to go through all the, you know, first the blowback and stuff. I mean, it's basically pretty simple. What's the problem? Occasionally, we find syringes in parks. What's the solution? Safe place to put the syringes near the park. But, you know, obviously, there's going to be some people that don't see it that way.
Whatever we can do to abate this problem nuisance. Jerry reported, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before that, about issues in city park.
Right.
With a couple of syringes being found.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Then there was another report that an outbuilding in one of the parks had been broken into and evidence of drug-related activity in it as well. So all we can do is keep fighting the good fight.
Yeah, that was actually a training today for West Virginia's clients of recovery residences. One of my friends, Rocky Meadows, runs, he's one of my peers, runs similar facility in Huntington. You know, we're fortunate that what we face here is nothing compared to what they're dealing with there.
Absolutely.
Actually, Kevin Oles told me to tell you hello. He was there. They've got to, you know, even much more serious problems in Martinsburg than we have.
Great, great folks. Kevin Oles?
Yeah.
From Martinsburg.
Martinsburg.
Of course, Steve Williams in Huntington, we've worked a lot together to compare notes on how we can.
Yeah.
It's an epidemic, so.
Yeah, with the boxes, I just wanted to come here and let you guys know what was really happening so that when, you know, the rumor mill starts and the negative committee has their meeting and...
Does he issue heroin?
What's that?
Does he issue heroin? Is that what they're shooting?
Uh, no. We've swung from that probably a couple of years ago. Methamphetamine is by far...
That's the other end of the spectrum, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's an endorphin release no matter what. You know, just the side effects are one kind of slows you down and one speeds you up. But we switched, it's been over a year ago, I sat and talked to Aunt Tammy Neirog, who's the director of day report centers in Barbara and Taylor Counties. And she just got in their monthly reports when I was talking to her. And they had 160 dirty drug screens that month. And there were like two or three of them that were opiates, a couple benzodiazepines, and the overwhelming majority were methamphetamine. We're seeing the same thing here.
When you say dirty tests, are these in the criminal justice system?
Yes. Yeah, in their day report centers.
There's also a article floating around, I should have given it to you, you should have put in the packet, about the spike in rural West Virginia with hepatitis and HIV. It's those things that we are the most fearful of, that even if you're fortunate enough to get past the active addiction stage, you've got those other health-related issues that could follow your...
Actually, you know, you mentioned that. One of my previous house managers, Rick Vogel, actually spoke at one of the town halls regarding the harm reduction program, died last week, and that's how he died. He contracted hepatitis C from a dirty needle a couple decades ago. Most insurance companies won't cover the treatment for Hep C until you reach stage three or stage four liver disease. And that window was so short for him that by the time they were willing to pay for the medication, it was too late. You know, it's a solvable problem. I mean, there's a lot of communities in this state that are shooting themselves right in a foot by opposing harm reduction programs. It's overwhelming. It's not even debatable. Overwhelming evidence that they work to reduce the transmission of bloodborne pathogens in a community.
Well, we just keep, as I said, fighting the good fight, Matt. Thanks for the updates.
Thank you.
If anything new pops up, please come share it with us.
All right.
Okay, we're into our department board reports. And first up is Galley Grant and Sam's, our first wild information gal and researcher writer. Galley, how's it going?
Yes, great. I think just on that subject before moving on, I kind of think it was good that Jerry brought that up in his last report that, you know, Willow and I had bumped into that. But I think it's worth noting, too, that we're almost four now, and we're probably at city parks at least once a week. And that's the first time that's happened. So good to be vigilant, but also, I don't think it's like the park is overrun. It's still safe to go to the parks. It's fun to be outside of the parks, so.
But very important for parents to know their surroundings of their kids.
Yes.
Because at four, she's quite mobile, and if you'd have just had your head turned for two seconds, she could have picked that up and thought it was neat and...
Yeah. Fortunately, we were up in the woods. She's really into building fairy houses right now. So we were up in the woods. We weren't, it was not in the playground area. But still, yes, good to be vigilant for sure. So on your front page of the report, I thought I'd do something a little bit different. And so this is from the Google Analytics from our dashboard on the website. I just thought it was kind of interesting to look at where people are going on our website. So in that first block, this is four kind of pages of the analytics. And so you see the 366 being the most visited, just the whole pages are coming from organic searches or from Facebook mostly. So they're getting there. And then Ambie will be glad to see the second highest visitor is paying their bills, so that's always good. But just so you can take a look and just see the different parts of our website and see what's getting, that people are taking advantage of seeing what information we have out there floating. And might give you ideas, too, of other things you'd like to see up there. So I'm certainly happy to add things as we need to. Randy requested, and I'm happy to give him that password, so he's going to be putting all the minutes up now.
No.
Only joking. And then as far as our news and announcements on the back, you can see the last couple of weeks worth of news that we've put out. Information, of course, about the winter wagon rides, and we're starting back up this Saturday, so there'll be three weeks. Seventh and 21st, the wagons will be departing from the Jawbone Park parking lot. And then on the 14th, they'll be departing from North Spring Street in conjunction with the Adventure and Toyland special event that's happening there on the Saturday, the 14th. So definitely come out this Saturday, come out tomorrow night for the Christmas parade. Looking forward to those events. Also, put out some information that's important about Monday, December 16th, City Hall being closed to the public. It's not completely closed, but closed to the public so that the servers, computer servers can be updated. And the staff here will be taking advantage of the time to do some cybersecurity training. Had some other Thanksgiving welcome and also some other news stories out. I'll go through each one by one. So going down to grants and, let's see, been working on some reporting for the REAP Recycling Grant with Jeff. Working on a survey for the Stalker use of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, which will be coming out in the spring again. And also, we got the WVU Physical Activity Mini Grant application submitted. I'm working on the other component of that being safe routes to parks. So those are for some walking and sidewalk-type improvements to hopefully improve physical activity opportunities in town and increase access for non-motorized transportation to downtown. Let's see, some research on some other grant opportunities that are out there and just getting ready for the holidays and the special events that we have going on. Be eager to hear which storefront is the winner for the decorations, seasonal decorations committee is going to be judging those, or maybe Pam already knows the winner. So that's all I have.
She's not talking, huh?
As questions.
Galley, what time is the Christmas parade tomorrow?
6:00 PM, lineup at 5:30 on Madison. Madison Street near Wendy's. JB might be helping with that.
On the subject of the Christmas parade, Ambie, can we get maybe Amy out in the morning? I'll help her. I mean, I did before with the signs on the street poles, maybe to try to curtail the parking for the parade. If she wants to come down, I can walk up and down the street and help her in the morning.
Do you have any parking in the street for the parade?
Well, for the parade.
At the time of parade?
Yeah.
How do people do park on the street for the parade?
I know, they park on the street for the Veterans Day Parade. I just, it just, it's hard for, like, if you're an older person, you can't, it's hard to get out to see it. And if they have a kid in the band or something, it's, I don't know, it just, it's much nicer if people don't park on the street.
Counsel wants us to try to park the cars off the main street and try to do that.
Other questions for Galley? We haven't heard anything on the abandoned mines line grant that could be any day.
No, unfortunately, yeah.
So we thought we'd know end of October, throughout November, and here we are, end of the first week of December. We'll just keep, keep our fingers crossed.
Keep pushing it back, so we'll see.
Thanks, Galley.
Yep.
Hope Willow's doing well.
All right, thank you.
Next up is Deborah Brockelman, Director of Stalker Youth and Community Center. How's it going, Deborah?
Good.
All of our kids across the way doing okay?
Everything's going great. Basketball started practicing this week. We had a good turnout at our skills day on the 16th. Very well attended. We had open gym over Thanksgiving break, and we'll have open gym and activities over Christmas break as well for kids to just come in. Drill team has several parades last weekend, and they'll be performing in the Buchanan and Rock Gate Parade this weekend. They'll take a break at the end of the month through January and start back with new registrations. After-school tutoring going very well. We have approximately 55 a day. There's still waiting lists for tutoring, but we'll have a day when we have everybody matched up, and then we'll get five more. So it's an ongoing need. So know anyone who would like to volunteer for tutoring, send them along. Building is busy every night, all throughout the weekends, birthday parties and meetings. And the PALS program that I told you all about, starting there a couple months ago, it's doing very well there. There's, it keeps growing. So that was a good, a good fit for that program. The building's like booming all day long. And the youth involvement hours for November was 12,730.
And that was the Thanksgiving weekend?
Yes.
It's a lot of, a lot of kid time. Questions for Deborah? And we realized just about exactly $7,000 from the elimination dinner.
Yes.
Last month, so thanks, Deborah. Next up is Jerry Arnold, our Public Works Director.
I'm glad everybody else heard. I'll get this long-winded report to you.
An hour's worth?
Yeah, at least an hour.
Okay.
I've resumed work on the ADA Transition Plan. All the departments will be conducting their annual performance, employee performance evaluations over the next month, and we'll be working on a new employee engagement survey sometime around the first of the year. Street Department will start resuming work on the theater next week, not tomorrow. Starting with gas line and getting the HVAC, that's the first thing, get online and then continue with plumbing work. Oh, I haven't lost your questions.
Remind everybody about the ADA Transition Plan, please.
It is a plan that we're required to have that identifies every sidewalk, every ADA ramp, and how we plan on addressing ADA issues in Buchanan. So each year that we put projects together, we have to identify those projects in that plan. And it's just like your, it's like any planning, like your 2025 plan. It's a living document, constantly changing. And this summer, I had Shayla go out and actually walk every sidewalk in Buchanan, take photographs of every sidewalk in Buchanan, all the conditions of the sidewalks. It's compiled into this manual, and then we take a look at it. That gives us the ability to identify the worst and concentrate on those. But the biggest thing with the transition plan is the ramps. You want to concentrate on those ramps, and that's what they look for. So that's part of, you know, getting state funding and federal funding, that has to be, that's just another one of those hoops that we have to jump through or keep, one of the records we have to keep. So that's just part of that. And it hasn't been updated in forever officially, I should say, so.
We've made good strides.
Yeah, and we're moving forward.
Questions for Jerry? Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate you as always. To all the guys, we appreciate it. Next up is Ambie. She's going to tell us if we can go on here for another month or so.
I'll give you your balances in general fund, CO-TAX, municipal stabilization, and updates on the Stalker capital campaign. General funds money market in checking is 980,146. Your CD remains at 84,557. CO-TAX is 54,492, and your municipal stabilization, 513,501. The Stalker Youth Center capital campaign, including the pledge, is 328,187. The other thing I'll just report on is the call for election will be at the next meeting. And it would have been this meeting, but I had to go through several guidelines on the levy because the library levy will be up next year. So the wording on that has to be very specific according to code, and it's changed some, so I want to make sure I got that right. Your bills that's in the packet to be approved, we've got a payment for the Aberdeen server, the second half of that, that's our computer server, 3,718. Snow removal, salt for snow removal, 5,429, and elimination dinner, food, 3,600.
Appreciate you pulling, huh? Questions for Ambie? Thanks, Ambie. Appreciate you as always. Our Chief, JV Kingle, how's it going, chief?
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
I'm going to be short like everybody else at midnight.
Wow. Won't be something good on TV tonight.
The daughters play basketball. Monthly activity is in your packet. The trend is still about the same, you know, 65% in the city, 35% outside the city in the first due. Year-to-date, we're at 1,178 calls. 61% of that is in the city, 39% is outside in the first due. I also want to reiterate, like I do every month, that if we run medical calls out in the first due like we do in the city, that would be reversed. The call volume would be reversed. We just, with the staffing we have, we cannot do that. Firefighter Ethan Smith injured his hand at work a couple weeks ago. We're hoping he'll return to work next week. He goes back to the doctor. The Christmas parade, Friday night, like I said before, the weather doesn't matter whether the Christmas parade will be there. Six o'clock, everybody's six, six-thirty. This is a really relaxed parade, people. At six o'clock, if people are still showing up, we probably won't start till 6:50. And if it's pouring rain down at six o'clock and nobody's showing up, we'll start the parade. It's all about the kids. The kids just want to have a good time and come to see Santa, just remember, it's about the kids.
Is this supposed to be a parade?
No. I think it's supposed to be a chance to share it, so. And come see Santa at the firehouse. Fire Department Christmas dinner is Saturday, the 14th. Like, I invite all council to it. It's at the firehouse. It's a good time, good food.
Are you cooking, JV?
Actually, we deep fry like four turkeys and a ham at the firehouse. It's tradition. Chief Tacy comes down, and we have Mexican dip and sit around and deep fry everything. You know, it's all good for you.
Tacy still has stuff in his beard from last...
Yeah, we have to put like a bib on it so you don't get hairs, but it's all good. We have a good time.
What time is it, JV?
The dinner's at six. So and Santa will make an appearance at seven at the fire station also.
And your request is buffalo chicken lasagna?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The, on the packet, the safety issues at the fire department, Chief Gregory and I are going to be discussing some issues from a recent event that happened where there was some involvement with an assailant. And I think we really need to look at the safety of our public safety complex interior at times now. Never dreamed I'd have to do this, but after what happened a week or so ago, we're really going to have to look at the safety issues at the public safety complex, so.
Before we let you go, there is, I guess, our acquiescence or acceptance of a $15,000, I see a gift from the county commission to the city of Buchanan to help facilitate cost expense in the first response area. Do you want to offer any words about that before you vamoose?
Well, you know, the trend with the county commission over the years has been to try to remove themselves from emergency services. The county used to give the city 27,000 dollars a year for one of the paid firemen's part of their salary. They removed that. They got rid of the fire trucks that they helped purchase. The trend just scares me, the wording of the contribution scares me. To, you know, if the $15,000 was a contribution other than for first due fire protection, if it was a gift or a donation, the wording was different. I might think a little different, but I personally...
Is there an alternative motive?
Personally, I would, as long as it says for first due fire protection, I would not, I would not be for it. That's my opinion. I think that would...
I've looked at it, and I don't know that there's any, I'm told that they don't intend to attach any strings to this.
Would they remove for first due fire protection and make it for insurance on fire truck? Or, because now, they have released those two trucks to the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department.
Right.
And that organization is going to incur some costs, and that's something we're going to talk in the future about providing, turning those trucks over to the city. They cannot, you know, I mean, the insurance to fuel, and what I want people to understand is those two trucks, one of them was completely purchased by the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department, 139,647 in 2002.
Yeah.
Okay? The other one, the 1996 model, $20,000 was put down by the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department. That truck cost $159,000. Every bit of equipment on those trucks is owned by the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department. So when people think that the county bought those trucks and then maintained them and gave them to the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department, it's not correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the county had some money in the first one, and they provided fuel and insurance for them since they were bought. But people got to understand, our first due district encompasses 95% of all businesses and 59% to 62% of the population of Upshur County. We respond to more calls in our district than the other fire departments put together. And not to take away from any of those.
No.
We just have a lot more responsibility.
Right.
It costs a lot more to do business. We maintain 15,000 feet of fire hose. We have to have three pumpers. We have to have a ladder truck. No other fire department in Upshur County is required to have the equipment nor the training or has the responsibility that the Buchanan Fire Department has.
JV, is it fair to say that if we were to, if we were to have a sizable emergency fire at a commercial structure located outside of the Buchanan Corporation District in our first due, that one call alone could potentially cost Buchanan Fire Department in manpower and in equipment more than $15,000 in one, in one shot?
Sure. I mean, if you damage one set of gear and an air pack, and that's 10,000 bucks right there. You know, when you look at the development that could happen outside the city limits right now, and one business builds a big building, and they pay a $50 county fire fee, the Buchanan Fire Department gets $7.12 of that a year. We start a truck up and drive out there one time, we've lost money. Not that we're in the business to make money, but it takes money to maintain a service.
Back to the trucks for just a second. Our intention will be to probably, I say ours, the volunteers have title to these vehicles. They will liquidate those so that that can be applied to help purchase the new $500,000 vehicle?
The plan that we're trying to approach is the one that's a 2003 model, we would, eventually, would like, myself and the city council talked about taking it and using it as a city vehicle. The 96 model, eventually, when we get the truck plans for the new one, is to liquidate it and put that money towards the new truck.
And similar to the one that was realized from the sale of Colton, you think it's got a value of 30,000 to 40,000?
20,000 to 40,000. Hang on. It'll probably have a little more attraction because it has a bigger water tank on it, so it's more used for rural areas. But yes, that's probably...
But on a purchase of a $500,000 vehicle, that's a nice additional amount that we wouldn't have to finance.
And we also, the 94 rescue truck that's owned by the volunteers will be liquidating it also because the new truck will do the job of three pieces of that rest. So you're saving on the insurance, you're saving on maintenance, you're saving on fuel there. It's all night long, so.
And back to the $15,000 gift. If Tom O'Neil were to look at their resolution and make it very clear that we're not boxing ourselves into a corner and that there are no strings attached, everyone knows that one of the things that... attached, everyone knows that one of the things that we will be talking about going forward as part of the strategic plan for our fire department operations is looking at a first due fire fee. What we don't want to do is somehow have someone creatively being able to say, "Oh, no, you can't do that because we gave you that $15,000 gift."
Well, that rumor's been out there, J.B.
Well, we will make it very clear if we're accepting a gift. I mean, we're not doing their resolution, all we're going to do is cash a check. And the check, it comes with no strings attached, except it's going to be part of our fire department's operational budget. And, I mean, the first due, the first due area includes everything in the city as well as what's outside the city. Ambie's got her end up.
When you mentioned Tom O'Neill, I talked to him, and he couldn't come to the meeting. We were talking about the agenda, he said that if asked, he would recommend that the council declined that because of the wording in the resolution at this time. He did mention that.
If he's already looked at it, that's his opinion.
Yeah, him and I kind of, we've discussed that, and we knew it was coming out. I just, I don't want the city to get themselves in a contractual bind with some words, you know?
I also don't want to look stupid that we are declining what could be a well-intending $15,000 gift to our fire operations.
What scares me is the trend county, you know, they started the system in 1950 by purchasing the first county fire truck. And then one in '67, and one in '73, one in '96, and 2002, they ordered that one. And, you know, the money for the paid firefighter went away, you know, now the trucks have went away, and now they're, you know, they could give you this $15,000, and they could go away in a heartbeat. So, you know, that'd be a year-to-year budgetary thing, so.
Okay. Other questions for J.B. before we let him run to a basketball game?
While he's here, do you want to bring F3 up and we'll just...
I would entertain a motion to bring F3 to the table. I have a motion to bring F3, which is Uptown County Commission Resolution to allocate $15,000 City of Buchanan Fire Response to the first services zone. Pam Bucklew has seconded the motion. So I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on bringing F3 to the table? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. F3 is now on the table. You've heard Chief Kimble, you've heard Ambie Jenkins weigh in on Tom O'Neill's position. Again, we don't want to send the wrong message to our friends down the street, that we are less than receptive to accepting a gift. And there is that old saying about not looking a gift horse in the mouth, but we, in exercising an abundance of caution, want to make sure that there are no strings attached to this gift. And if they can re-articulate it in such a way that there wouldn't appear to be any strings, we'd be most happy to accept it. Is that a fair statement?
That's fair.
I would entertain a motion.
Ambie, would you please reiterate what Tom said?
Tom said he would recommend that the council decline the acceptance of the $15,000 because of the wording in the resolution.
What particular wording? I just read this thing, I don't...
The first due part.
It states...
I didn't see that. Where is it stated?
It's in...
So it's on the...
It's in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 paragraph.
Is this on the resolution?
Yeah, resolution transferring property to the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department.
Hey, so what is, where is it on?
Last page. Go to the second, to the last page in your document.
Right.
Okay.
And go to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Go to what?
Well, that next, all the way to the end.
Keep going, J.B.
There's three...
Yes. Page 1 and 2.
Okay, so number 2, it says, "Beginning in the fiscal year 2021, the County Commission will allocate the aforementioned $15,000..."
Which is the trucks, right?
"...to the City of Buchanan, West Virginia for fire response for the first due fire service zone pending annual budgetary approval." Is that the...
Yes.
That's the paragraph that's causing Tom...
That was one you mentioned, I put the other one on.
In the state code, when you read the state code on fire service, a county is allowed to contract a city for fire protection. And with that wording, first due...
That could be saying that they're paying for first due fire...
They're paying you and the city to provide fire protection outside the city.
So if and when at some point there was a first due fire fee established, they say we already paid for it?
Yes.
That's Tom's opinion, or...
I'm not the attorney, but he told me those words, that he would decline because of the wording in the resolution. In the first due, it appears that the $15,000 is to cover the first due area.
Okay.
That wording is...
Again, our purpose isn't to reject what might be intended as a very gracious gift to our operations, but we don't want to be saddled with conditions relative to the gift.
I would have thought we would have talked about that or something before, just, did we just receive this, or were we not aware?
Just came in since the last...
Well, there were also discussions that Tom O'Neill, J.B. Kimble, myself, the mayor, Ambie, were a part of, with Kerry Wallace and with Christie Tenney, about fire service in the county, and we went back and forth, back and forth a few times, and basically everything that we discussed, they didn't, it didn't happen on their side of the aisle. And then these series of letters came through with gift or turning the trucks over to the volunteers, and then them allocating $15,000 to us. So it's kind of been a, there've been a lot of discussions back and forth since, what, September timeframe, August?
Back into July, first of August.
Can we draft a letter of understanding for acceptance?
I don't think it's going to undo the resolution.
Then we cast a check.
We don't, we don't have a check yet. We've cashed a check.
Then we don't have anything, we've got a letter telling us we're going to get it. Well, I think they're sending us, their resolution stands for something. It means this is... You send it to mail? This is what the $15,000 means. And if there's something in that document relative to the gift that causes Tom O'Neill some stomach acid churning, I think we ought to wait and hear from him. Why don't we table this?
I agree.
Until the December 19th meeting. Does that sound like a plan? That way, if the County Commission wants to clarify, they've got two meetings worth to do that, and let us know, and we'll just table the matter until then. I'd entertain a motion to table the matter. I have a motion by Albaugh and a second by Ryland's. Is there discussion on the motion?
Are you going to communicate that back to them, that maybe go back to the drawing board?
Oh, yeah. I figure they'll know pretty soon. Katie and Brad and Amanda will be letting them know if everybody got it this evening, right? Okay, so if there's no further discussion, call for the question. All those in favor of tabling the matter, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. F3 is tabled. Go to your basketball. Okay, Tom is not with us. He did come to work today and just looked completely miserable. In case you don't know, he had disc fusion surgery in his neck just a week, 10 days ago, and he's a hurt guy. Correspondence and information, several things in your packet. You have the resolution that we've already talked about in the Uptown County Commission. You've got a letter to the West Virginia Public Service Commission regarding Route 33 Utilities Extension. I'll bring you up to speed on that project here in just a couple minutes. The Buchanan Fire Department Christmas Parade Notice, we've heard J.B. talk about that. Cali told us about the winter wagon rides, and the Adventure and Toyland Fund is a week from Saturday, December 14. There's the notice to close City Hall on Monday, December 16. And then there is a proposal that has been transmitted to us from J.F. Allen Company regarding our new partnership, collaboration to realize utilities out on 33 West. I'll bring you up to speed with that in just a minute. Consent Agenda consists of four items. If you approve your consent agenda, you'd be approving the minutes from the last regular meeting of November 21. You'd be approving the building and wiring permits. You'd be approving the payment of the general fund bills. And I think, I'm not 100% sure on this, but I believe Christie Wilkerson has agreed to accept the position on the Historic Landmarks Commission. Her husband Curtis, of course, with the Ryan Strategies and our chairman of the planning commissions, I guess he figured it was time to engage his wife in some of the municipal fun. So let's go ahead and put Christie in there. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Skinner and a second by Albaugh. Is there discussion on that motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to strategic issues. Discussion possible action municipal utility extension quarter age, US Route 33 West service area. I do not believe that there is anything for the council to take action on relative to this matter. The letter that has been transmitted to us from J.F. Allen indicating that they have engaged in some collaborative discussions with the Shaw Brothers, as well as the Marx family, all of which are the primary owners of properties on the southern side of US 33 West. They are making a pitch at which our Water Board and Sanitary Board would incur a total cost of roughly one-third of the total project on the south in the amount of about $290,000. We discussed this among our city utility officials earlier today, Kelly Arnold, Jerry Arnold, Ambie Jenkins, Buck Sample, Sam Luglow, Tom O'Neill came to the meeting, of course, I participated in it. And what we believe we will do is to make a counterproposal to J.F. Allen, clarifying some things, and I'm not meaning to be vague in this description because we still have to work on the details of a written agreement for the developers to consider. But it would go something like this. The Water Board, in order to preserve all of its territory out along 33 West, and the Sanitary Board, in order to accomplish the same thing, would contribute $100,000 each toward realization of those utilities. Additionally, we would undertake in-house, and the work is largely already done, all engineering and administrative costs, including inspection of the lines, that will be deeded over to us. These utility lines will be the City of Buchanan, that is, the Water Board and/or the Sanitary Board. Additionally, all labor to install these lines would be undertaken by J.F. Allen. There could be some cooperative work with the Shaws because we all know that they're contractors as well. This would, in essence, conclude the matter that is pending before the County Commission.
So the 290 was what they're asking, and we're offering 200?
200 plus some administrative work, including our design of the utility lines. The General Fund would not be involved in any amount whatsoever, it'd be entirely the Water Board and the Sanitary Board. So, that's...
Which can be done outside of corporate limits.
Yes. The General Fund cannot do that, but the utility boards can. And again, these are utilities that are in our current designated Public Service Commission recognized territories. Jerry, Ambie, have I kind of generally hit the highlights of what we're looking at discussing further with, and we've already communicated some of this to J.F. Allen's representative earlier today, isn't that right?
Sounds like you summed it up pretty well.
I do, I do, sometimes I should just shut up, but I'm going to say something one more There is a fundamental misunderstanding about the way utilities work on the part of our County Commission. Our County Commissioners continue to espouse that they have been told by engineers and by lawyers, and indeed by the West Virginia Public Service Commission, that it is somehow possible for there to be duplicitous providers of utilities in a common utility territory. Unequivocally, 100% for sure, that is not the case. They continue to operate under this mythological understanding that there could be parallel water lines and sewer lines in a particular utility area, and that is absolutely not the case. The West Virginia Public Service Commission made that very clear to us again today, as we inquired with them. They don't know where the County Commission is getting this, but they continue to tell that story. This is our territory, been our territory for 25 years, and we will continue to do whatever it takes in cooperation with developers to preserve our utility territory without the city being collared by surrounding public service districts. Jerry, Ambie, have I articulated that correctly?
Why do they understand it?
That's the way everybody understands it.
Mr. Cutwright stopped by my office as late as yesterday and told me the same thing. We're just trying to give everybody options.
Yeah, that's what he told me earlier.
But there's also more to this, and maybe I should shut up, too.
No, no, we're on our own.
Hallelujah.
No, I'm trying to tell...
When, we did ask for information under a FOIA request, and we were going to go at the circuit court today, but we have postponed that, I believe, David, till the 18th.
We have postponed.
But when you get it, when you start digging into what we should be receiving, and what the county should be receiving, you're going to be flabbergasted about what's there or not there. It's shocking. And none of this would have come out until they started this whole process.
We can confirm that each of the two public service districts that we have been at odds with had audits conducted in 2006, one, in 2007, the other, and both were, the quantity of write-ups for inappropriate activities is voluminous. There has not been another audit in the last 12 to 13 years with either public service district.
And it appears to be violation of covenants? I mean, it's shocking.
That's a good way to leave it.
Yeah, I could say something.
Anyway, there'll be more to come on this. The good news is that J.F. Allen and the Shaws and the Marx and everybody else out there have come to understand that when Buchanan says it can build utility lines, that there is a lot of integrity to those assertions. And the fact that they are willing to pony up about $700,000 on what would be close to a million-dollar project is a good thing. That is all that we ever wanted all along, was the folks that would be benefiting from these utilities to become actively involved in the financing of this. And I think we're very close to realizing that. So, again, I think we've behaved, our organization has behaved throughout this entire three-month period with ethically, transparently, and with integrity, and we will continue to behave since. I don't think we need to take any action on it. F2, approval of supervisor salaries that would actually become effective December 1, which was four days ago. I believe that the council would like to discuss this in executive session...
Yes.
...with possible action coming out of executive session. So let's table that one for the moment until we get through our comments and announcements, and then I'll entertain a motion to go into the executive session. Does that sound acceptable to the council? All right, comments and announcements. Mary Albaugh, what you got for us?
Not a thing, let's get this rolling.
Pam Bucklew? Pam Bucklew?
I just want to remind everybody that next Saturday, December 14th, Burma is putting on the Adventure in Toyland. It's going to be located behind Jester Line in that area in that parking lot. It's going to be different things for children. We're going to have a special appearance by a mayor or an aunt.
A mayor or an aunt.
M-A-R-O-R-I-O-N-E-T-T.
Get my strength quote all the time.
But I think it'd be a fun time for the kids. That's it.
That's all Pam's got. Mr. Rylands?
I'm good.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Would like to thank everybody who participated in Small Business Saturday. I would like to hope that everybody will continue that Small Business Saturday all year round. I know a lot of the local shops did very well last weekend and the art gallery did well. There was a lot of people out shopping through downtown and eating. A lot of visitors really enjoyed their time here. So we have something special and I hope that, I hope it continues. And I hope folks try to do everything they can to buy all their gifts here in Buchanan this Christmas season. That's all I got.
Mr. J. David Thomas?
That's it.
Just want to remind people about the, this is going to be a busy weekend, which includes the Farm's Christmas Parade. Also, there's a Whisker Ball Saturday, the 7th. And also get your dictionaries out and start preparing for the spelling bee. You'll be getting some calls and visits to participate in that last Saturday in January. McCaulley's challenged everybody, so that's true to know.
I'm a pretty good speller.
Yeah. You did okay last year.
He's your time champion.
Thank you, Shawna, for reminding us.
She's been studying since last year.
And I also want to pass on my prayers and thoughts to Mike Ross and the Rosses and to the Steeves.
Mr. Randy Sanders?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was also at that meeting today and about the extensions, the search extensions and so forth. And I'm just continuing to be amazed by the expertise and the patience that the different folks that are involved in that exhibit and the willingness to look at the options necessary to make this work and work effectively. So it was a very, very good meeting and I'm proud of those departments. Very proud of them.
Along that line, you know, we are looking at six different models to finance the north side sewer line. And so we'll be making those clear to the developers on the north side as well. We think that all of this will be quite okay here. Sure. Right. Thanks, Randy. Couple of things I've already mentioned that we realized, just about exactly $7,000 in the elimination dinner. We hope that on a couple of fronts, by the next meeting, we hope that we'll be hearing from the governor's office on the abandoned Mines Land grant. There's also a huge potential contributor to the capital campaign that it's just premature for us to make any announcement because they haven't nailed it down for us yet. We may have some very good news at the December 19th meeting. The other thing I would ask council to consider, it's not on the agenda, you can't take action tonight. For the better part of 50 years, when Mrs. Poundstone and Mrs. Show were the combined city recorder treasurer, there was a pittance of their total salary was attributed to what the city recorder made because they were the city treasurers. For the past several years now, since Nancy retired 10 years ago, we continue to pay pittance to our city recorder. Understand that the, our board members make $200 a month. City recorder doesn't make that much. He's at all of the, or whoever's the city recorder, right? It's going to be my recommendation that the council look at a model that would increase the compensation paid to our city recorder. This needs to be done by ordinance and it needs to be done by an ordinance effective prior to the May 12th, 2020 election. And we're already talking December. So it's something I'd really like the council support on. I would like to put it on the December 19th agenda, looking at different models to increase the compensation to the city recorder. If you paid the city recorder the same amount as board members make, which is $200 a month, times four, that would be $800 a month. And if you paid him $250 per meeting with the city council meetings, that would be an additional 500. That would be a total of $1,300 a month, times 12, the compensation would be increased to $15,600 a year. That's kind of the model that I'd like to advance. I know it's not a whole lot, but it's way better than the measly $9,000 bucks a year that the city recorder presently is compensating.
David, I would also include, I think that it's been really 16 years, and I've suggested this several times, none of us can give ourselves an increase. Okay, we have to do it prior to an election. For example, if we did something for the council, I would not be, or Mary wouldn't be, or Pam would not be eligible for that kind of an increase. But I do think it's important that the mayor has not had an increase for 16 years. And I think that should be considered also. And I also think that the council has not received an increase for 16 years. And I don't have any model to look at right now, but I think it's not just the recorder, it should be all the positions that are sitting up here.
Make a comment there?
Sure.
I served as temporary city reporter.
Yes, you did.
I never worked so hard, so many hours for so less money in my life. Okay? And that position needs to be, it's never been separated since when Nancy retired. It's never been done.
I laughed when someone on Facebook last year said, "Just how much do you make an hour?"
Let me tell you.
We're talking 0.00 something.
Well, just to be clear, it's my intention to run for mayor again. And I would not accept any additional compensation over above what I am receiving right now. I am, I've spent 37 years in public service for this county and I give a good chunk of it back, what I do get. And I would prefer to exclude the mayor from the dynamics that you're talking about.
I don't think that's appropriate, David. I think if you, if you want to give your whole thing back, you can do that yourself. But I think we should say, what is an appropriate compensation for a person that's putting in X amount of hours? Every mayor's going to be different, we know that. But if the mayor decides he wants to give 50% of his money back to any organization, whether it's the city or the county or some other nonprofit, that's their decision at that point in time. But I do think that there ought to be some standardization of what would be appropriate for these different positions. And we already know we have an issue now that we have to address at some point in time, so.
Let's talk about it on the 19th. We'll put it on the agenda and talk about it on the 19th. Good. That's all I've got, folks, except we do have the supervisor salary matter. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn into executive session. We may, we may make a decision coming out of that meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. Can I have a second to the motion? I have a second by Thomas. Motion by Skinner, second by Thomas. Discussion on the motion. Call for the question to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion, Carrie's. Thank you all for coming.